We have a quorum, so I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Stockbridge to order. Thank you all for joining. You have the agenda, which, the first item of which is to approve the minutes from February 2nd. And Jennifer, you must have writer's cramp from preparing those minutes. They were remarkably thorough and helpful. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move second.
Second. Nancy, did you second?
No, I did not.
I think Christine.
But I wanted, I wanted to approve the minutes as they were amended.
Okay. That's what.
The final one now.
The ones that were sent out last don't have to, I mean, they were okay, right?
Yeah.
Did she added?
I changed, I changed it, Nancy.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right, so it wasn't really amended.
Oh, okay, I got you.
So we, Christine, you seconded it?
Yeah.
Okay, is there any discussion, any, any corrections or additions or deletions? Hearing none. Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Bill?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Marie?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
Kate? Kate?
Sorry.
Okay, that, that's everybody.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the special permit for 19 Lakeview Drive.
Um, Bill, before you move on to the special permit, can I just, Jennifer, can I ask a favor of you when you do the agenda? Something like grant discussion, can you, you know, be a little bit more specific so it's clear exactly what that is about, as well as Jeff Lacy, I had no idea he was actually coming tonight.
On the agenda?
Yeah.
Is that?
Thank you.
It, Jeff Lacy's on the agenda?
I know, but just sometime, usually when it says update, he's not necessarily here. So just make it clear that he's attending.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Kate, it was, there was also some uncertainty as to whether or not Jeff would be attending in person or Zoom tonight, because as everyone knows, he has another job that has priority. And so it's weather dependent on him being here. And earlier in the week, we were not for sure what the weather was going to be like tonight. He said yesterday he was going to be here, but.
Okay, perhaps a better example is, is grant discussion. I just have no idea what that is in reference to.
It's the Berkshire Regional Planning Agency Technical Assistance that we talked about last week. And we said we'd be talking about it again because the application could do next week.
Hey, Bill, nobody can hear you because you're muted.
Sorry.
I can, I can see you, your mouth moving.
Sorry. Mark, if you're there, can you proceed?
Open the hearing.
Oh, that's right. Wayne, can you do the honors, please?
Yes.
Thanks, Kate.
Oh, Bill, can you also ask people who are here for this special permit public hearing to introduce themselves, including the engineers and any attorneys?
Okay, let's let Wayne do his thing and I'll do that.
Thank you.
Notice is hereby given that the Stockbridge Planning Board, acting as a special permit granting authority, is scheduling a public hearing via remote at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, to consider the application of David and Annie Minz at 19 Lakeview Drive to construct a new house under section 6.1 and 6.5 of the Stockbridge zoning bylaws. The complete application and plans are on file in the Planning Board Office in the town offices.
Thanks, Wayne. So I see Mark and Jackson are here from Foresight. That's clear. Dr. Minz and your wife? That's you?
Yep.
We, I think we know what your role is. I'm looking through. Lori, are you the?
Yes.
Attorney?
Robbins, for the record, Lawyer Robbins, representing David L. Minz and Anne Marie Minz, owners of this property. And I have a full disclosure, I represented the prior owners to their ownership, Ed Keon and Keon Cannelli, Patricia Cannelli, who got special permits for developing a house on this lot, but never proceeded with that. They decided to buy something else. So I have all those records as well. But representing the applicants tonight, and they're here, and we have Jackson Alberti and Mark Volk, since this is highly technical, they will give, be giving the presentation.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from relating to this application present? Yes, please. Mr. Potter?
There we go. Yeah, David Potter, Green River Design. So I did all the, the design drawings for the project.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else relating to this application? I see a few just interested members of the public. I won't press them for ID. So Mark or Jackson, do you want to go ahead?
Um, yeah, sure. Would you mind if I was able to share my screen and pull up the proposed site plan?
Please do.
So I'll pull that up and I believe Mark's gonna give you a rundown on, on that. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Order.
Are we waiting for Mark?
Believe, it looks like he's still muted at the moment. So yes, we are.
How's that?
There we go.
There we go. All right, so this is a pretty typical LPOD around the Stockbridge Bowl. It's a teardown demo of an existing structure at 19 Lakeview Drive and construction of a new proposed house. Basically in the same location, it's actually back a little bit farther from the lake to the actual structure. There is some decks that are suspended that overhang. It will be no closer to the lake, as I noted. The footprint of the house is approximately 50 square feet greater than the existing structure, so not really substantially greater. There is some grading to be done around the house. We're proposing to put drip edge all the way around the house to control stormwater runoff and, and, and then increase infiltration. There is some grading on the lower side of the house. There is an existing boulder slope on the lower side of the house. The grades of this parcel is fairly steep already, so it's about averages about 20, 25% grade. It's like a four to one slope, so it's, it's pretty, it's, it's steep. But that can be managed with erosion controls that are proposed below the house site. Those are proposed as straw bales and erosion control fabric fencing. So that would be installed prior to any construction on the site. Then the demolition would proceed and then site clearing and construction of the house. There is, there is proposed numerous trees to be removed. Most of them are fairly large sized pines in close proximity to the house. So there's about 12 pines that are proposed in close proximity to the house that are proposed to be removed. We are proposing a planting plan and that planting plan has about nine substantial sized trees. Those being, they're all native species. What we're proposing is one inch calipore, burlap, ball and burlap red oaks, some hop horn beams, and then shrubs proposed would be viburnums. There's some American elms proposed. So there's native species and there's some white pines proposed to the north of the house. Down at the waterfront is proposed to install a new dock. The existing dock that was there has been removed. That was non-compliant per Stockbridge bylaw and per state regulations. So the new dock complies with both. That it is no greater than 25 feet long and is less than 200 square feet per the bylaw. And that is 25 feet setback from the property's side yard setback per state regulations. The dock, once we go through the Conservation Commission and that's approved, we'll also go through Mass DEP, Chapter 91, simplified dock approval. We are still in the phase of, we've had our first Conservation Commission meeting. There was some questions or concerns because of other sites on, that are ongoing around the lake of the sequencing of this project. The sequencing has been proposed within the LPOD. This is a full demolition and reconstruction of a house, so it's gonna considerably, considerable amount of time to do that. And what we're gonna propose with the Conservation Commission is that the contractor would schedule four site visits with the Conservation Commission so they can review the site at four intervals. I do want to stress that this is unlike some of the small lots that are having problems around the bowl. I understand that there's some current concern about sequencing and how a site can be totally exposed. This site is not one of those sites. It's a larger site. And the most everything within 50 feet or so of the lake will be untouched, basically. The existing site has gravel footpaths that go down to what was the dock, existing dock system that's been removed, the, the docks being relocated. The existing gravel paths will remain. There's no proposed work basically within 50 feet of the lake except for the dock relocation. We are proposing down at the lake site that there is a substantial amount of buckthorn down there and a little bit of honeysuckle, and all of that is proposed to be removed. And we're proposing to put in native species of red osier dogwood, high bush blueberries in replace of taking those shrubs out. Those are high buckthorn and honeysuckle are invasive species. Proposing to just remove those and replant native species. Some concerns of stormwater around the site, stormwater. You have two provisions in your LPOD to get through. One is just basic runoff. Runoff is what is basically going over the surface. In most of these single family house sites, it's just really it's one, it's one drainage area. There's, it's not, you know, these are fairly small sites. So it's considered one drainage area in drainage area calculations. So we go through a calculation of the slope of the site, what the condition of the site is, whether it's wooded, grassed, paved, you know, what, how much of the, of the area is impervious by house or driveway or other things. Here, we're really taking out an existing house and then we're putting a new house in the same location, approximately 50 square feet. Engineering wise, it's not really that significant. Nevertheless, we're, we went through calculations on this. So there's, the two things are stormwater surface runoff and then the other part is infiltration and retention. So we've gone through, this is not substantially, the proposed site is not substantially different than what is existing there already. We are taking out some substantial canopy that is proposed to be mitigated by doing some new planting. And everything within 50 feet or so of the lake is not proposed to be changed at all. So that's, that, that is, surface water should not be influenced by this construction over what is existing. So our chore is to not do anything greater than what it is already. So we meet that it is going to be in approximation the same as it is. As I said, it's, it's the drainage calculations for this small site, small of a site, sort of tough to really nail down, but we do our best to do that. Infiltration wise, originally we had, for previous projects on this site, we had infiltration chambers proposed because the, the house site, the house was going to be substantially larger than the existing structure. The chore of infiltration is to is to mitigate or infiltrate over the info, the, the impervious area that is over existing conditions. So that's about 50 square feet in this instance. We're proposing to use drip edges on this, and there's about 100 feet of drip edge around, around the structure. And if that's one and a half by two foot wide, one and a half feet deep and filled with stone, we're way over the capacity of, say, 50 square feet by, say, a one inch storm. In fact, we can meet the, the retainage on a 100 year storm for the, for the amount of material or amount of storage capacity that we have proposed in the drip edge. The LPOD coverage that is proposed is about 11.1%, so that's under your 15% maximum. The existing is 9.5. We will be going for special permit with selectmen for pre-existing non-conforming. We're no closer to any side yard front. We're actually meeting the front. So we will be going to them just to comply with the pre-existing non-conforming. I think I'll probably leave it there. I think I've hammered it. And so there's about 12 pines proposed to be removed. There's 24 plantings in the front, nine of those being trees. Down at the lakeside, we're taking out whatever buckthorn and honeysuckle there, and there's 15 native plantings shown down in that location. I think that's about it. Questions? None? Great.
Mark, thank you. Are there any questions from members of the Planning Board?
I have a question on snow removal. How is that going to be handled?
The snow removal on this site's probably being handled just like it is. There's only, just a little loop driveway there. And just plowing out the loop driveway, there is a proposed one car parking space there and they're just gonna plow, I would imagine that's going to be plowed directly. Maybe David Minz has a snow blower and he'd like to do it himself, but I would assume that that would be the method that would be done here. It's not gonna be anything substantial, you know, not gonna get into whether, you know, there's, there's always, you always want to propose or not go out and say that you're not gonna use salts and grout and, and sands because you sort of have to do that on some of these sites for, just for safety and keeping a clean driveway.
So you do anticipate you'll use a salt-sand mixture? And then at the end of the season, will that be cleaned up and removed if there's any residue?
If there's any residue, I, I'd propose that that would, that would be cleaned up. You know, I don't see that, this is proposed to be a year-round use. So this isn't just a you know, an on-season facility. So they are proposing to live here full-time. So they will be clearing the driveway.
If it's, if it's of any help for us to answer, we never really use salt-sand. We've just always done our own. We had a guy plow the, plow our last driveway and we did the rest of the snow blower, that's no, snow thrower. So I don't anticipate there's gonna be a lot of difference in how we, how we're doing this. It's a much smaller driveway.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
I have a question about the dry-laid stone terrace. Is that permeable or is that like sheet of stone? I don't understand what dry-laid stone is.
Dry-laid stone terrace would be so, sort of like a Goshen stone and that's usually laid on a crushed stone surface. So that is considered a permeable surface for most storms. You know, if you get up into greater than, say, a 25 year storm, which is, say, something greater than two and a half inches, which is a lot of storm. Most situations, most situations, that's, that's running off just your normal grass surface anyways. So for most purposes, the dry-laid stone terrace would be considered permeable.
Okay.
It is the land, the property kind of west, closer to the, to the bowl, below that dry-laid stone surface, particularly where the steepness begins. What does that consist of? Is that, is that just? Is that lawn or?
No, it's, it's mostly just a wooded, it's a wooded area. It doesn't really have any grass. So it's a leaf duff. There's a little bit of understory to it. It, but it doesn't have, it's not really lawn, no, if that's the question.
Yeah, that was the question.
Yeah, no.
Is it possible to maintain the duff as duff or is that, will that be?
That is, that is the intent.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I just have one suggestion or comment. Welcome, Dr. and Mrs. Minz. If you would consider in terms of design element with the house, windows that take into account the problems with avian or bird, bird decline, which are largely due to climate change, but also architectural styles play a role, specifically windows. So if that's something that you can consider, that would be, that would be nice.
I, I could add, I, I don't know if this makes a difference, but there's a fair number of windows on the back, but not a lot on the front or sides. So it's not like the birds will see a house that they think they can fly through in most cases. So hopefully that will help mitigate that problem and we're, we're, we're as concerned as you are about that.
Thank you. Yeah, it's the reflection is, my understanding is the reflections in, of the windows are what, what confuses the birds and, you know, with nearby trees and, you know, sky reflected, that's what throws them off. Thank you. Mark, thank you for this very thorough request. It was an easy read, I really appreciate it.
I have a question about the dock and whether or not that will also come to the Planning Board for our review. It appears that you said Conservation Commission, but under my understanding of Chapter 91, the Planning Board also has an opportunity to weigh in if they choose to. And I just think we should keep those options open if they are available. So maybe you don't think we need to review this or maybe it doesn't qualify. But if it does, I hope that you will include us in the review process.
Chapter 91 includes, I believe, all the boards. And it, there's public review also, so it's posted in the Eagle. And that is for all public review. So by that, I would say you're included in that. But I believe it is, Chapter 91 has to go through Planning Board, Selectmen and most of the other boards as well as being approved by the Conservation Commission.
I, I believe you're correct. I also have a question for Lori. When she mentioned there was a previous permit issue and I knew there was a problem, I believe with COMCOM, about whether or not there was an outstanding permit. So are there any permits that are unresolved on this site? Or are we okay to move forward with this permit this evening?
Okay, as far as I understand, the Conservation Commission never issued an order of conditions because they took the position that the existing dock was violative of their, of something. And they weren't gonna do anything until the dock was removed. So they never issued a permit.
Okay. All right, thank you. I was just confused by that. I also have a question on the stone wall. Are those real stone or are they ready stone?
No, this is all real stone here. This would be, any, any stone here would be real stone, not the ready rock.
That is so good. I'm sorry, but I just really think that something that is connected to the earth is important on a site like this, so I appreciate that.
Any other questions relating to this application? Are there any comments from abutters or neighbors, interested parties? Hearing none. I'd like to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Is there any discussion about closing the public hearing? Hearing none. Jennifer, would you please call the roll?
Bill?
Hi.
Wayne?
Do we need to make a motion to accept the application?
We haven't closed the, the public hearing yet.
Okay, all right. I.
Marie?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
We're all stat.
Okay. Thank you. Now I think we need to vote on the, on the application. And I guess before then, don't we need to agree that the findings required in 6.3.6 have been satisfied? Does that come first?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
At this point, the board, you know, has a discussion as to their thoughts on this request. And that's important to do. And, and then, you know, after we've had a discussion.
We can, we can then agree that these can, or not, that the conditions have been met and, and take a vote, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So is there any discussion by members of the board on the application?
I mean, ideally each member of the board, Bill, I mean, ideally each member of the board bill will, will express their thoughts on the request.
Other than by voting to approve it or disapprove it?
Yeah, just if they have any thoughts or comments, it's, it's a good.
Sure.
On the record.
Anybody who wants to comment, please do so.
Okay, I'll, I'll start. This looks like a really good request to me. It's in scale. It's obviously just replacing what was there slightly bigger. I appreciate the thoroughness of the request and how clearly it was laid out by Mark Volk and Foresight and Jackson and whoever else worked on it. And it, it's and from my standpoint, it, it's a, it's a good project.
Well, I certainly second those comments. Does anybody else want to align themselves with Kate's views or otherwise?
I also.
Christine?
I would also like to compliment the applicant on a very thorough, well put together proposal that was easy to follow. And I appreciate that. I also like the fact that it appears that the owners of this property are doing little things to respect the environment and the site. The rock wall is really important to me. I think the fact that it said in the application that the roof runoff was going to go into the lawn area, which recharges the water. And I think that is really a great opportunity to do something for the environment. And the path is not going to be a stone path that doesn't work, but it appears to be a path that is a forest path that will go from the house to the water. And I think all three of those additions are just showing a real commitment to the town and to this site. And I am thrilled that you're going to be part of our community.
Well, I can also say I agree with Kate and Christine. I think this is a good project and, and I do appreciate your thoughts on things like the, like the birds and like the, like the drainage and that kind of thing. I think, I think this is a good project. I hope you enjoy the area.
I agree with everyone that has spoken already, and I really like the native plantings. And I like how you name the native plantings instead of saying, oh, we're having native plantings. But I like how you said what the native plantings are and where they're going to be. I like that.
One thing what I forgot to mention, speaking of plantings is that we were told by one landscape architect recently that the hemlock is not, has not yet been hit with the woolly adelgit insect. And apparently it is definitely here in the Berkshires. So I didn't see that listed on your site, on your plan, but I would, I would be cautious about planting any hemlock at any point.
Okay. Any other comments from board members? Okay. Can I stipulate that Jennifer, you look like you want to talk?
No, no, it's my, I, I had a little note that said my internet connection is unstable. And I'm like, oh. Okay.
Okay.
That's all.
We must be on the same server because I'm getting that also, Jennifer.
Then for the record, I'd like to stipulate that the conditions of 6.3.6 have been met without objection. And therefore I think we can go to a vote to address this special permit application. Jennifer, would you?
I also have to do the findings of 6.5.6. We are doing the special permit findings that we, that the area is in compliance with the bylaws. It's essential and desirable for public convenience. It will but not be detrimental to the area, will create, not create undue traffic and will not overload.
Yeah, that's 6.3.6. 6.5.6 is specifically addresses the LPOD. And we can make reference to both that the, the application is in compliance with both.
Okay.
Um, Bill, in terms of the, the application plan, part of the checklist for the LPOD that we're supposed to fill out. We, we have the locust map. That's number one. We have the scale drawings of property showing existing water courses, et cetera. We have the grading and drainage plan and we have the construction time schedule. The one thing we don't have is the conservation commission's opinion, but I think that is pending, I guess, right? So.
I think we heard they're, they're working on that, right?
Yeah. So that takes care of that checklist there.
Yeah, thank you.
Before we go, I love in the D that it said that no dwelling or house erected or placed there on shall cost less than $1,500. I just think that that's a wonderful history of this property.
I would say that those restrictions have expired.
Yeah. I wonder what that is. In inflation adjusted terms, I wonder what that figure is, but we won't go there. So can I have a motion to approve this special permit?
I move that we approve the special permit from Dr. And Mrs. Mintz as proposed by Forsight Land Services and dated December 2020.
Second. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Bill?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Marie?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
Okay.
Well, thank you and good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. The next agenda item is budget discussion. There are actually a couple of budget discussions that I'd like to raise. One was a budget worksheet that Jennifer distributed a couple of meetings ago that we never quite got around to. And it had to be submitted by, I think Friday, two weeks ago or 10 or 12 days ago in late January or very early February.
February 5th.
February 5th. And we've all seen the worksheet, although maybe not recently. And it's a small one. It just covers a few small items. The principal item is the board secretary's compensation, salary compensation. And because I wanted to get it in by the deadline specified by the town, by Michael Canales, I took the liberty of after talking with Jennifer and complimenting her on her performance of proposing an increase in her compensation for her work with the planning board. I don't have, I actually, I forgot to get the exact numbers, but she's been held flat at about $6,300 for three consecutive years. During a time when the workload has dramatically increased. We all are witness to that, all of us on the planning board. These three hour meetings are going to kill us. Or kill her. And so I, I, I felt strongly that we should recommend an increase. And so that's what I did. I recommended an increase to $7,000. Whether that gets included in the town's budget or not is debatable. It's out, kind of out of our control, but I wanted to have that number in there. So that we didn't miss the opportunity. At least to express our, our thinking that she deserves an increase.
Thank you, Bill. I think that's great. She certainly does. She certainly does deserve an increase. I think that's great.
Any, any comments or questions about that? It's actually been submitted. So I suppose I could revise it if somebody had a strong view on the board. Otherwise.
I would just say that I think Jennifer does a great job and always goes above and beyond for, for all of us. We, we really appreciate all that she does. Thanks, Jennifer.
Amen to that.
I agree.
Okay, good. Well, let's hope the budget process doesn't do damage to our, our request. Bill?
I have a question about the, the budget more generally, Bill. In terms of when you look at some of the, the categories in the budget, is there, is there flexibility within, I guess Patrick, you could answer this. Is there flexibility within, within those, some of those categories? I mean, like supplies is, is, is not really, is, is not really, I think that was one that was not spent much at all, but then there was advertising, you know, so I'm just wondering how that works.
Jennifer, can you enlighten us on those other, other items? I did not make any, any suggestions for changes in those other much smaller dollar amount categories like postage and copying and supplies. Jennifer, do you have a, can you enlighten us?
Okay. So I mean, supplies would be like pads, notepads, folders to keep all the, you know, each individual hearing that we have, whether it's a special permit, a Form A, a sign, all has, they all go into their separate folders and all our, you know, little, the tapes to
I know what that.
Put the information on. I don't.
Jennifer, excuse me, I know what supplies, what that category is used for. My question is, is, is there flexibility? Maybe this is really for Patrick. Patrick, is there flexibility between the different categories in the budget? I mean, can you, you know, if you're not using?
I mean, I don't think there is. I think that the budget line items are what those lineups are supposed to be spent for. Otherwise, you know, we'd be, you know, buying, buying all the selectmen and chairman cars with, with the plowing budget, you know, I mean, I mean, you know, so, but I'm not the guy to ask. I think it's Michael and Jennifer you need to ask.
Okay. Well, then I guess it's too late for this year to, to make any changes, but for next year, I would recommend looking at those categories where some you've barely touched or barely touched it all, but others are spent down.
Why is it too late? We're just starting the process. I mean, the select board and the finance committee haven't even jointly met yet, which is in a week till Thursday.
Well, Bill had said that it was too late.
Well, it was, I was given a deadline of February 5th. And I met that deadline for fear that if I didn't, we'd be left hanging. But you know, these are relatively small amounts. If we don't spend those amounts, you know, it's, you know, we're, we're being frugal. And
Right. But if you look at the, like, if you look at the year to date, you'll see that postage is, is already, is already spent down completely.
For most, for most of the committees, it is. And Ray, the accountant went over that with several of us, you know, that they just continue to put money and they're not going to like, take the money or, you know, say, well, you can't, you're supposed to meet her anymore.
Jennifer, with all of our, with all of our business we've had this year, is the advertising budget sufficient? It seems like we've had to advertise a whole lot. Does that?
We've spent, we've spent like 41, 41% of the advertising budget thus far.
How can you tell?
I'm looking at the budget.
That was on the spreadsheet that was sent around a couple of weeks ago. I mean.
I'll just go over it quickly so you guys know. So basically, as you would expect, Jennifer's salary is, is about half spent. Advertising is 41%. Postage is, is 100% spent. Supplies, 1%. And training costs are spent 18%. So you know, that's where it is. It, we don't need to spend a lot of time on it. I just think it would be good to take a look at those categories next year.
Okay.
If I may say something from when I was tax collector and I had a pretty tight budget. Every year that I went before the finance committee, they requested that we all reduce our budget by 5%. Every 12, I was there 12 years and every year they asked us to reduce it. And if you had a category that you didn't use or you don't want to use half of it, they request that you eliminate that altogether. Or reduce what you wanted for it. So it was the finance committee that kind of kept track of all of that.
You know, that finance committee.
Just saying that.
Bill, I have a, I don't.
It's a kinder gentler finance committee now, Nancy.
Oh, good.
Patrick.
Yeah, my, my question is, um, goes back to, to Jennifer. Um, you know, we all know that there's a tremendous volume of work right now. You're proposing 11% raise. If you look at the last three years, when it's been flat, can, it might be helpful to point to what the actual increase in workload is based on an evaluation of the number of, you know, applicants three years ago versus there is now. My guess is it's going to be significantly more than 11%. And you know, that, that might be helpful in sort of making a case. Uh, you know, in terms of an adjustment.
Yeah. Thank you, Patrick.
I think Jennifer can probably have some idea of the additional hours that she's working now over those that she worked three years ago also. And that may be an important consideration for the finance committee to have in their deliberations.
They can look at my time sheets.
Yeah.
I have, I have to put every single day, every single hour that I work. So they can just look back on those.
That would probably be very helpful for them to see.
Yeah.
And I also have a question about the permit fees that we receive. Do those go into the general fund or are they allocated back to the planning board? How does that part of the budget work?
No, the fees go to the town clerk. She, she does all those. I don't have anything to do with that.
And they don't go back into your budget?
No.
Too bad. We'd probably be self sufficient in how many applications we're dealing with.
Yeah. It's a good point. Any other comments about that budget? Okay. The other sort of budget item that was discussed at the last select board meeting where Michael Canales and the select board began a first look at next year's budget very preliminarily. And as Patrick said, there's going to be a meeting with the finance committee next week. A first meeting with the finance committee was a discussion of the grant, the, the funding request. Similar to the one we have for this current fiscal year. You'll recall that the town meeting approved a $40,000 figure for consultants for the town, for the use by the planning board, of which it was broken down as to $15,000 for a planner with respect to the open space or natural resource zoning law, bylaw that we're working on. And $25,000 for Phil Arnold, our consultant from Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. I think we've gotten value from both of those. And I, I think it would be beneficial, particularly speaking in the first instance about Phil and from, from Berkshire Regional Planning. I think we all agree that there's a lot more he could be doing in the future, other, other bylaws that need attention. Things like compliance with state law that has changed since bylaws were written to bring them into compliance. Things like compliance with state law that has changed since bylaws were written to bring them into compliance. Any number of bylaws?
The state law are you referencing, Bill?
I, I'm not. I'm just saying generally.
I mean, that was what the diagnostic was about, was checking
We have, but we haven't done it.
We did it.
We've revised bylaws?
No, the diagnostic was to assess zoning bylaw in terms of its compliance with state law. And what Joel said was there are some minor things that were so minor is to not be worth doing.
There are a couple of things in state law that was, the state law was amended in 2016. And one of those is to consider allowing special permits to have a longer period of time before they have to be renewed. I think you can go from one year to two. So that is one area that there could be some discussion on. Doesn't mean that we're for or against it, but we can allow the public then to weigh in and make that determination. Then this December or January, there was an economic bond bill passed. And in that, sort of strange because there are any number of revisions to Chapter 48. And at this point, Phil can probably share with you a video that he has done on what the overall changes are. But no one has really figured out how, how towns are going to have to adopt these changes. But there's some feeling that they're going to have to be adopted fairly quickly. So those, all of those issues are issues that obviously could be addressed. And then our subdivision regulations are really, I think they may be twenty five pages. And most towns have a hundred pages of subdivision regulations or more that really spell out what they want in their development. And if we have a developer who comes in and complies with our subdivision regulations under the Westwood decision, he gets a permit and we can go to court and say, no, we don't want it, but the courts have upheld Westwood as the reason why towns are losing control of their permitting process. So I think looking at something like our subdivision regulations also becomes really important. And there's also the whole issue of the finance committee. I think Jay is pushing a housing trust fund and other people are interested in seeing that enacted. If that becomes part of our bylaws or part of our government in the town, there are going to be a lot of issues that we need to think about as to how to implement that. And there's probably a lot of other issues. These are just things that we could think about for Phil to carry on next year. And some of these we may want to look at putting in the debt, the district assistance grant because that would give us further funding to work with Phil.
Yeah, I think the the value of having a professional planner at, at our disposal is is attractive and beneficial. And I thought there was enough prospective work to continue that contract at the same level which the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission has agreed to.
I feel like, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure I agree. So I guess I would like to say that if we're talking about, are you talking about twenty five thousand for next year for the planner?
Yes.
Okay, I, I guess I'd like to make the comment that I, I'd like to think about this. And I certainly think that if we're going to be talking about allocating twenty five thousand dollars again next year, we should know exactly what it's for. We should have that conversation and not just be talking generally about subdivision bylaw, you know, and so on. I think we should be clear about what we're going to do with it. We had talked about a list of things last summer. We could potentially go back to that and take a look at that, but I do think we should be clear.
I would, I would agree with Kate on that. I'd like to be specific about what we would spend funds on.
Okay.
There's some way though you had to have the amount in there for the budget. Now, we can't ask for money, or could we ask for money when we come up with what we want? You know, more detail of where we want to spend money.
Well, I think in the interest of time, we probably should have a list such as Kate is asking for, for our next meeting. Not tomorrow night's, but our, our next regularly scheduled meeting so that we can say yay or nay then. And get it into the, I think that'll give us time to get it into the budget. I'm, I'm confident we can come up with a list that does justify another year's worth of Phil's work. But it's, it's a fair point. Patrick, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I don't want to editorialize at all on, on, on your budget, but I would just point out that there seemed to be consensus between Michael and the other selectmen that there should be a, another special, special item, a warrant item rather than part of the town budget. So you're going to have a chance in writing that warrant item to talk about the list that you come up with. So I'm just making the point that there's time for you to do that if you feel it's important.
Right, so I think it would be good for everybody to revisit that list. We all have it in the minutes, posted online at the, on the town website. And just, you know, give some thought to that for the next, before the next meeting.
Okay. I'm just making a note. Okay, the other amount within that, that forty thousand dollar figure I, I mentioned that is similar to this year's amount is fifteen thousand, that makes up the total of forty, for, in this case, Jeff Lacy to potentially to, if, if needed, to finish the bylaw that he's been working on. It's mid-February, it's beyond mid-February. The town meeting is in May. I would love to get the bylaw done in time for the May town meeting. As a practical matter, I think it's increasingly iffy that we'll be able to do that. We've got a lot of work still to do. We're going to look at a draft of the bylaw tomorrow with Jeff. We've got, we've got a process to involve the public in open meetings where they, everybody who's interested can ask questions and make comments. That's going to take time to do. There will be revisions and, and subsequent drafts. We ourselves as a board will need to take our time in agreeing, if we can, on what a bylaw should, should look like. And as a, as a simple measure of protecting ourselves so that we do get something done for a subsequent town meeting. And Patrick assures me that it's highly likely that there will be another town meeting in late summer or early fall. And the reason for that is that at last count, the select board came up with at least fourteen warrant articles, ranging from right to farm to something to do with bears and a bunch of other things. And correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick, wasn't there a bear bylaw somewhere?
Yeah, the police chief wants to make sure the trash bins can't be opened by the bears. Bill, can I just clarify? I, I don't speak for the rest of, of my board, which determines whether there's a, a special town meeting. I, what I, what I said in our conversation was that I would personally support one. If you feel you need more time to get this right and it's going to go to August or September, October, that, that I would certainly support, you know, a town meeting whenever you need one to, to bring up the issue.
Okay, but thanks, thank you for correcting me. So that's the, that's the thought on the fifteen thousand relating to Jeff Lacy's work on the natural resources protection by, zoning bylaw.
I mean, how much has been sent, been spent thus far from the twenty five and the fifteen thousand?
Well, the twenty five, I don't have a, a rundown on twenty five. Jennifer, I don't know if you've seen it. I haven't. I don't, I don't know where we stand on Phil's invoices. We got our first invoice, I believe, just the other day from Jeff Lacy and it's less than a thousand dollars. It's basically research and drafting time. And so there's, there's still, there's still some room. But as I say, I think there's a lot of work that will involve him, need to involve him between now and town meeting, if we are to, to go for a warrant on, at the May town meeting. And if we aren't, I think we need to protect ourselves by having funding available to allow us to finish the bylaw for a later town meeting.
Okay, well, can you please send me information on what we've spent thus far for the regional planner, for Phil Arnold?
Sure.
Thank you.
I can send it to the whole board.
Okay, great, thank you.
So on this matter, this, this agenda item, do we agree we just defer this until the next meeting?
I do.
And, and I don't think we need to take a vote on it, but we'll discuss particularly Phil's potential future work in more detail with a laundry list of potential projects at the next meeting. Is everybody okay with that?
Good with that?
Yes.
Again, I'm just making a note to myself. Okay. The next item is the grant discussion. Christine, do you want to take the lead on this, please?
Well, at the last meeting, we brought up the fact that we last year applied for the district local technical assistance grant with Berkshire Regional Planning Agency to do a safety bylaw. And we applied for it, I think earlier in the year than, or like in October of twenty nineteen maybe. It's been a while. We, our grant was accepted and they agreed they would fund it, but with COVID, the funding never came through for that particular grant. We then put that on the list of projects for Phil to work on. And at tonight's meeting, he may have some information on what it would take, not that he is fully engaged in writing it, but what it would take to finish that bylaw because he's pretty much finished the other two bylaws that he was working on. However, the next grant cycle for this local technical assistance is due on February twenty fifth. And I mentioned at the last meeting that we would have to make a decision tonight as to what we wanted to do with that money. I have some ideas, but I'm curious if people have any ideas. These are small grants that really are supposed to focus somewhat on, or are supposed to focus on housing issues particularly. That seems to be their priority this year. My idea, and I don't know if it's feasible, would be to do what Harvard Mass just did and conduct a survey of housing needs. Because I think we feel that there are people who may be looking for something smaller, may be happy with their present housing, don't want to see it change. And we are trying to craft bylaws to address an issue, but we really don't know how people feel about their present housing. I'm not for sure how much Harvard spent on their survey. It was rather complete. And now they have moved forward with being able to come up with some comprehensive planning based on the results of their survey. So that's just one idea. I, you know, if anyone has other ideas, I certainly think they should be considered. But this is money that would help our planning process if we can get an application in by February twenty fifth.
Christine, any comments about that? Questions of Christine? We want to go forward?
I guess I sort of feel we have enough on our plate.
This would be a consultant. This wouldn't be, that wouldn't be us necessarily doing the work. We would have a consultant develop the information so that we have some good information as to what kind of housing needs people in this town feel like they need. The survey would be for Stockridge residents, is that correct? Right, we could target it. Harvard did two surveys. They did a broader one and then they did one for the, you know, the older population group. And as we look at our demographics and the fact that we have an older population group and I think that maybe they're interested in, in being able to downsize. And then we could use, encourage them to do that if we had housing available. But that is just my opinion. It would be nice if we had a survey that actually found out from people what their priorities are and how they would like to move forward with seeing housing in the town, but also for their personal needs. Yeah, I would think we would want the whole, the whole spectrum and not just the senior population. I would think we'd want the whole spectrum of people. We could, Harvard did both. And now they formed a housing task force to work on how to move forward with the, with the result.
Just so, I just want to point out to the board that, um, the MVP state grant that we got includes a survey that's going to be going out in the next two months to, I am not sure if it's one or two surveys actually, because half the grant is for senior resilient housing and half is just for the general, you know, MVP process. But we are doing a survey to the entire town and I've asked Michael to share that with all the chairman of all the committees, who are then welcome to share it with their committees because, as well as the, my colleagues on my board, um, to make sure that if folks have any questions they want to get into this townwide survey, it's going out in the next sixty days that we do that. So this is already happening. It's already paid for by the grant. And, and it's happening, you know, for town on, as relative to town schedules imminently. I guess sixty days is imminent when it comes to town business. But, uh, you know, so, uh, you know, I would expect, I've already seen a draft of that. I would expect to see that from Michael in the next few days.
That's great, Patrick. Can you make sure that it goes to board members too?
Uh, I will leave that up to the board chairman because what we talked about was he was going to send it out to all the chairman. I don't have any problem with that, Kate. I'll send you a copy if you want to, or anyone else who's watching who wants a copy.
It's public information, so.
I, I, like I said, I have no problem with it. All right.
Nancy, did you, are you trying to say something?
Sorry. Who collates that information from when it comes back, Patrick?
You do, Nancy.
Oh, cool, thank you.
I think it's, it's planning. Isn't it the planning board person? Who's that, Jennifer?
No, maybe it's Kate. I don't know.
These are all details I am not completely on top of, I'll admit it.
I think the, the serious answer to the question is, is the consultant, I believe.
Yeah, you would think.
Oh, okay.
The consultant is being paid for by this grant that we've got.
Will this do what Christine's suggestion was going to do or pretty much?
Look, the survey, the survey says what we ask, yeah, we have to write, I mean, there's a draft of the survey, but you know, there's no reason if we're asking fifteen questions, why it can't be twenty and sort of get in some of the, some of the, it wouldn't be as comprehensive maybe. But it's sort of a free ride along and I'm not even sure it's a bit, I, I, I can't speak for even, you know, the I, I can't speak for even, you know, the MVP process here. I'm just brainstorming. This is not, you know, but if it's conceivable, we could add some questions on that would meet the needs. We do have a senior resilient housing. Out of the $39,000 grant, $18,000 is for senior housing. So, you know, we're supposed to be looking at these questions.
I like the free part.
Yeah, well, yeah. You know, yeah, exactly.
We could apply for the district technical assistance grant. And then if we find that we're getting sufficient information from the grant that Patrick is doing, we don't have to accept it certainly, and it could go to another town. But this way we'd be certain that we are getting some good solid housing information on the population is looking for.
And this, this, Christine, remind me, what's the due date for the grant to be?
25th, but it's a very simple, one-page application. As long as you show that you are needing some planning ahead for housing and are considering the community compact cabinet activities. So it's not any, it's not a heavy lift to apply for it, that's for sure.
I guess the other question then is, in light of this MVP project that Patrick mentioned, this municipal vulnerability. If they're already going to do a housing survey, are there, is there another use for this? That, or some other aspect of, that would satisfy the grant-making body to that would fill a need that some of, any of us might have identified? I'm struggling to come up with an idea, but I'm sure.
I don't think so. I think we're covered, Bill, frankly. You know, we're taking on a lot already. I think we're covered.
Anybody else have a view?
I agree with Kate. I think with this bylaw that we're working on, I think that's going to take up the majority of our attention.
Yeah, and I, I'm glad Patrick spoke up because I had forgotten that even though I've been involved in these MVP meetings, that this survey was part of the process. So I think we're probably going to be covered. And as Patrick said, maybe we can append some of our own specific questions that aren't covered by the draft that we see, which I promised to share with all of you if it comes to me. And, and we can get around, we can get what we need that way.
Right. And technical assistance, it may not seem like taxpayer money, but it is. It's not coming
Oh, yeah.
Resident, residential property taxes, but it's, it's state funding, which is coming from us, so.
I agree. Okay. Was there anything else in the, in the grants discussion, agenda item, Christine, that you wanted to raise?
No, I'm fine.
Thank you for doing that.
We're, Bill, are we doing a hard stop today at 8:30, I hope?
What time is it?
It's seven.
Order of eight.
Yeah.
It's coming on at eight o'clock.
Yeah, Jeff is going to come on at eight, and I, I'm sure he would be happy if we ended by 8:30. And we are going to see him tomorrow. So yes, I think we can finish by 8:30. Okay, I see Phil has joined us. You're muted, Phil.
Yes, I'm here.
I just got a message that my internet connection is unstable. Maybe it's the ice storm. I don't know.
I think it is the weather.
Yeah. Phil, welcome.
You, Bill.
Thank you.
What was that?
It's the internet, not you.
It's always something else. It's never me.
It's not a senior moment, no.
Okay, Phil, you saw the agenda. What, if anything, do we need to do about these bylaws?
So at the last meeting, we reviewed byways, signs and parking again. And I thought we established that pending a couple of small revisions, that those were going to be informally accepted as, you know, final drafts and ready for the next step.
So, Phil, did you, I didn't get another draft, so it's the one that we worked with at the last meeting? What we're still working on?
If I recall, for two out of the three, it should have been the same. There was, there was a minor change to one of them, and that was resubmitted. I have a note here, on February 3rd.
Which was that?
I'll pull it up. I'd already moved on to accessory dwelling units, so that's what's on my mind now.
Did you get a chance to, you said you were going to check with Nat about using images? Line drawings in bylaws and having?
I thought it was about having citations. I did reach out to him. Nat is supposed to be retired, so he's a little hard to get a hold of. He works off and on for VRPC, but for, generally for things like that. I don't know. It's pretty low priority, I think. So I can try to reach out to somebody else at VRPC and see if I have a better look.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, but to answer the question, I, I thought that signs, driveways and bylaws are, signs, driveways and parking were, those bylaws were in pretty good shape. That's what we discussed last time. And yeah, that was my impression. So I've already moved on to the next thing, and I've been working on accessory dwelling units.
Good. On that point, on that point, I, and I think I told the board this at the last meeting. I have forwarded them to Donna Brewer, our lawyer, for her review. At least I remember forwarding two of them. I have to double check. I haven't heard back from her, but I will follow up on, on getting her views on, on those bylaws before we, you know, send them to, assuming they make the warrants, because as, as Patrick said, there's an issue around how many warrants are going to go on the May town meeting. But I think we'll be ready.
So did you make that one change that I recommended, Phil, to the sign bylaw?
Yes, that was, if I recall, there weren't any recommendations for the other two, but then there was a minor change for that one. And then I resubmitted that draft to Bill.
Right.
Can you send that to me, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
They'll send it to Jennifer and then it goes out to everyone, rather than, so that makes it easier, I think.
Okay.
And also, I think that it seems like the May town meeting is far in the distance. But I'm getting very concerned that if we don't get these bylaws to the selectmen, so they can come back to us for a public hearing. And then we can get a recommendation back to the Board of Selectmen in time for it to be in the town warrant, which I thought the warrant was going to be closing at the end of April. We could be hitting a time crunch. And the sign bylaw in particular has an impact on lost lamb. Because I think, if I recall correctly, but COVID fog is terrible, that they were able to put up their signs under the legislation that was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor, which allowed communities to encourage economic development. So the selectman said, yes, you can have those signs. But if we don't have that issue on the town meeting warrant, so people can make a decision whether or not they want those signs to continue, you could have a problem. So I would urge that, once Bill gets that language back from the attorney, if there is not a problem, that we get it to the Board of Selectmen as soon as possible.
Good point. Made a note.
Yeah, because Donna should be able to review that fairly quickly, I would think.
I would think so too. I will follow up with her tomorrow.
But that's another two weeks for us unless we make a motion tonight, but I don't know how people would feel about that. If we have to wait another two weeks. We're into March, and then we have to send it to them, to the Board of Selectmen and do the advertising. So getting really tight.
Yeah. Hang on. Okay. I'm just looking at a, at a message. Okay, well, I'll, I'll follow up with Donna and I, I mean, are we ready to vote on these three bylaws? I mean, I, I think we've studied them to death and wordsmithed them to death.
I'd love to hear back from Donna, Bill.
Yeah, okay. Okay, good point. I'll, I'll, that means we'll, we'll deal with them at our next meeting and then expeditiously move them on to the select board. Okay, Jennifer, can you note that that should be an agenda item? Thank you. Okay. Phil, you wanted to talk about ADUs. We've got a few minutes. Please go ahead. Things to tell us.
Yes, I'll try to keep it relatively short. So I have two drafts that I believe were developed by the planning board. It says draft from the planning board on them. Oddly enough, it seems like the older draft is farther along for some reason. So one is dated November 5th and one is dated November, or December 3rd. And the one from December 3rd, which is a little bit more recent, it references a lot of points throughout the bylaws and where amendments need to be made, changes to language, additions for definitions, things like that. And they don't.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just to clarify, is this from November and December of 2020 or, or 2019?
2019.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, so anyway, the, the newer, yeah, the newer draft, it references sections of the town's zoning bylaws, and they don't exactly line up. So the, the earlier one from November 5th seems to make more sense. So that's the one that I've been working off of. And there's actually there, there's like a model accessory dwelling unit bylaw from the state, so that provides a nice template. The only thing is, since it's from the state level, it's a, it might be more comprehensive than it needs to be for a town the size of Stockbridge. So it tends to be very, very lengthy. And I'm trying to cut that down because what I've seen in other municipalities in Berkshire County is that these bylaws are actually relatively short. For, as important as I think they are, they tend to only be a couple of pages. So I'm trying to get the draft to align with the state guidelines and also trim it down a little bit if possible, just to make it, you know, allow for easier comprehension. And yeah, I think it's just going to be more concise and easier to understand if it's only a couple of pages. The main thing is, though, I mean, they vary a lot from one municipality to the other. So my next, my next move was, I intended to talk to Ned just about some lot sizes. It was mainly just some of the physical characteristics in Stockbridge, just to get an idea from him about how some of that stuff should be, should be altered. Because like I said, it's different from one town to the next. So I'm just trying to find something that's going to be appropriate for Stockbridge.
That's good. I think Ned had some, Ned had some thing to say about, about the ADU issue. And, you know, two-family housing, I think, I think he would be good to talk with. Good for you.
Phil, do you, do you have a sense of how many other towns have actually adapted ADU bylaws, particularly in Southern Berkshire?
I could get you a list, but just off the top of my head, I know Lenox, Great Barrington, Tearingham. I can't think of any others at the moment. There's definitely more, especially in recent years. It's become more and more popular, especially with, there's a lot of trends within the, the county that make a bylaw like this more and more appealing. So there's obviously a lot of issues with housing and aging population and just limited housing stock in general. So these are really increasing in popularity, and I'm sure there are more, there are definitely more municipalities that have adopted it. But those are the main three that I've been working off of. I just like how they're, how they're organized. And again, just very concise. There, you know, there's no question. And they're, they're very straightforward.
Yeah, okay, good. So when do you think you might have something to show us?
Today's Tuesday. I'm possibly Friday.
Oh, that would be great. Yeah, that would be great. Any questions of Phil about that piece of work he's on?
That's this on our next meeting? Do we now, you know, if he gets it done by Friday, do we talk about it or give feedback by our next meeting or not? Should we put that on the agenda, I guess is my question.
Yeah, I would think we could.
Well, I think we need to watch our agenda. They, I think they're getting a little bit too long. And so why don't, you know, we use some judgment in terms of where it goes on the agenda.
Yeah, we have two special permits, March 2nd.
Okay, then maybe, maybe we wait. But still, it would be, if you, if you're ready to share it on Friday or whatever, please do so, and we'll figure out where to slot it in with you at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that definitely works for me. If we have to skip a meeting, that's fine. I'm, I'm still going to make progress on it. And I'll submit it as soon as I have something that's more refined than what I have now. On that note, I guess we could also discuss just some future tasks. When I, when I started, there were some things in progress, of course, and we wanted to keep that momentum going, so I just ran with that. Then accessory dwelling units was next on the list. That's where we are. But we probably don't have to nail anything down tonight, but just something to keep in mind that still going to be working with you for several more months. So hopefully the ADU thing is not going to take that long. So there's going to have to be some, some future work, so.
We talked about it earlier.
Just something to think about.
Yeah, we did talk about this before you came on, Phil. Because as we work on a budget for next year, the town's budget for next year, we've had some conversations around the value of, of engaging you for next fiscal year. But I think we, we felt that the right way to do that was to, amongst ourselves, identify a list of desirable projects for you.
Okay.
And use that as the basis for a, a grant request, or a request to, you know, arrange a contract with, with VRPC for your services for next year.
Okay, great.
And also, if you see things in your review of our bylaws that you think we are going to benefit from you working on, I think that would be good information to help us in the agenda.
Okay, yeah, I, that's a good point, Christine. If, as you've looked at our bylaws for various purposes, and anything has struck you about any aspects of, aspect of them that are squirrely or plain wrong, or could, could use clarification, could you let us know? I'm, I'm not asking you to do a, a, you know, thorough search now, but to the extent that you've noticed anything in what you've done so far in air, in other areas, other parts of the bylaws, that could use spiffing up. Just, just let us know.
Yeah, definitely, I will. I haven't seen anything really out of line. I mean, there's always, there's always some little discrepancies with bylaws, just because they're, you know, they're kind of made piecemeal. So that, that's the issue. So that, that's the issue is, you know, trying to think, keep things as consistent as you can when, you know, over time, things are added and removed. And, but I haven't seen anything that was, you know, really wrong.
Um, just so you know, we had a diagnostic done very recently.
Okay.
And the outcome of that was, it was done by Joel Russell. I don't know if you know, know him or know of him. He's over in the Northampton area. The outcome of that was that generally speaking, the zoning bylaw, Joel felt was in good shape. He said there are minor things, but they're so, they're so small that they wouldn't be worth pursuing. So I personally am not interested in, in seeking out more, more cost for the town on that basis. Because of the fact that we've, I feel that we have done, we have covered, covered the zoning bylaw in that respect. I think maybe Wayne might agree with me. I don't know.
The issue, I think, is if we're starting to move forward with looking at housing needs of the community. And sometimes there are bylaw amendments that Joel wouldn't have picked up because he was not focused on that at that point. That we may want to think about incorporating into a review to make sure that our bylaws are consistent with what the needs that are identified by the residents show. And so that's, that's one of my big concerns is to be responsive to the needs of the community.
And just to answer Kate, yeah, I, I would. If Phil isn't aside, spot something fine, but I don't know if we need to focus, but it would be a nice thing for him to look at if he comes across something that glares out at him.
Well, and, and the other thing is Wayne and Kate. If, and I had forgotten this, if Joel has identified, you know, minor discrepancies, why not fix them? If they've been identified, let's, let's.
He said they were, they were, just were not worth addressing. It's almost like they're more trouble than they're, they're more trouble than they're.
Well. Okay. But if there's, if there's some issue with them.
Basically, he was saying there wasn't. I'll leave it there.
Well, that's not what it sounded like, but I, I take your point. Okay. Anything else, Phil?
Um, no, I don't think so. I'll try to get the draft to you as soon as I can and then we'll figure out the next meeting or perhaps the meeting after that to discuss it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We now have, if he's on or going to be on. Christine, were you going to reach out to Jeff?
And I'm not getting a response from him. I don't know exactly what's going on because he's usually pretty good.
Yeah, he usually comes on early. He may be out plowing already. There may be.
But usually he would tell us. I don't know what's going on.
Well, I know some of you may not be able to make tomorrow afternoon's meeting, the Wednesday afternoon, four to six that we have set up. I realize that two days in a row of Planning Board meetings is not something we would normally want to have, but in the interest of kind of keeping on an accelerated schedule, to the extent that that's practical, we thought it would be useful to have a workshop essentially with Joel to look at and talk about, comment on his draft. And it's a public meeting. So mindful of the time, it's now seven after eight. And Jeff is non. And knowing that we're going to be able to talk with Jeff tomorrow, I'm wondering if we shouldn't adjourn.
Yeah, let's adjourn.
Does anybody else have a strong view? Would you, Kate, could you be a little clearer about whether you want to adjourn or not?
Sitting there looking at me.
I'll take that as a motion to adjourn, Kate.
Jeff, Bill, Jeff is joining us. He's trying to get on.
Oh.
I think Kate is not going to be here tomorrow.
No, I didn't say, to clarify, I said I would need to switch things around and I might not be able to make it, but I, I'm working on it. I might be able to make it. I'll see.
Good.
Okay, because I think we want to have as much input as we can. So.
I mean, I would love to end this meeting now if everybody.
Well, I think, I think with Jeff, what we can do is devote tomorrow to a review of the bylaw, his draft of the bylaw. And to spend just a few minutes today on sort of what he's been working on, how he's gotten to where he's gotten. By the way, while we've got a minute, because I still don't see that he's on. We've confirmed with legal counsel that the working group of Nancy, Christine and I that was established to work with Jeff early on was subject to the same open meeting laws as the regular Planning Board. And Patrick pointed this out and I confirmed it with Donna Brewer a few days ago. And so that group has been disbanded in respect of state law. And I think that the way forward i- in practical terms is, and I've confirmed this as well with, with Donna, is that we appoint one person, not three and not two. It can only be one, according to Donna, to be the interface in between meetings. Between the Planning Board and Jeff. And I'd like to suggest that the natural choice for that role is Christine and she's willing to do it.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
If there's no objection, that does not require a vote, I don't think. It's not a subcommittee. It's not a working group. It's simply one person who has, you know, access as needed on behalf of the board with, well, not even on behalf of the board as between the board and Jeff. And it, it eliminates this problem with the working group, which we unintentionally created in, in opposition to state open meeting laws. So Jeff, you're muted, but welcome. I guess you haven't started plowing yet.
I did a couple today.
Oh, you did. I guess you might have a little more work tomorrow. I don't know. We're looking forward to your to meeting with us tomorrow at four o'clock with a hard stop, Kate, at six. If not sooner, to go over the draft of the bylaw that we, we now have. Do you have anything, knowing that we're going to talk about that specifically and, you know, go through it section by section, I think, at least that's what I expect. Is there anything else you'd like to share with us tonight? Any, any concerns, questions, comments about where you are in process?
Homework for tomorrow?
Yeah, sure. What you have is draft number two of the NHRPZ bylaw that I've been working on based on the one in Lyden. Modifying it to Stockbridge. Christine has provided some editorial, editorial assistance. I've incorporated some of that. I've also done some of my own editing based on, on how I write bylaws and some of the things I've observed about Stockbridge, changing the names. Many cases. So that's, that's where the bylaw stands and it, it has some explanatory material on, on the right side, the right margin. In, in a number of places, it explains what a section does. So from what I, what I know about Stockbridge, this should probably be significantly less controversial than the cottage era state redevelopment matters, which are coming up. I mean, this is, this is a natural and historic resource preservation bylaw, and that's what it does. It, it creates a lot of open space and compresses and compacts and reduces the amount of development that's possible on, on these parcels. And it's like the NRPs that have been passing all over the place around Massachusetts. It's sort of replaced cluster zoning as the preferred method of being the most protective zoning of natural resources in the state. So I think this should be less controversial. And it's based on bylaws that have passed with significant margins in, in many towns. So anyway, that's sort of part A. And you've got a second draft of that to look at. And if you could look at it a little bit ahead of tomorrow, maybe ask you some questions, that'd be great. What, what I was also going to do tomorrow was present a, about a 35 slide show. PowerPoint show on NRPPZ. I believe you folks, many of you have seen Randall's show. Now I have a little show to show you because this technique is a bit different and I can get through it pretty quickly.
And then we. Correct me if I'm wrong, but did we not see at least portions of that at our last Planning Board meeting?
Did I do that?
Am I, am I hallucinating here or?
Yeah, I think you already did it. Is that the one that you put together with Joel?
Yeah, did I do that already?
Yeah, you've done it. And I, and it was a good, it was a good show and I'm glad we saw it, Jeff. I do think that tomorrow we ought to try to wade through the draft of the bylaw.
Okay, that's fine.
Where can I get a copy of that draft to read before tomorrow?
It's posted on the town website, Richard.
Where?
Under Agenda and Minutes and then go to the Planning Board and it's, it's right there at the top.
At the top?
At the top. Now, Jeff, I did not get that presentation that you did for us at the last meeting. You know, I think if you just save it as a PDF and.
I think he was struggling to, with the size.
PDF.
Oh, that's right, Kate. You, you suggested that I put it up in, in the cloud someplace.
Just save it as a PDF and that should size it down enough that you can email it.
I, I believe I have tried that.
Okay, then I'll, I.
These are, yeah.
Do I have to go to Christine if I send you my Gmail? Can I send that to you directly or do I have to go to, through, through? I don't see how I can go through Christine on that one.
Why doesn't he send it to everybody? And Jennifer then can try and get it posted on the town website. Because I think everybody is.
He needs to post it to the cloud and I'm probably the best one to help him with it. This is not like, you know, sensitive information. This is just a presentation.
Jeff, you, you mentioned that the draft you sent has your editorial or comments in the margin.
Yeah.
The one I have doesn't have that. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong one. Did anybody else get a version with comments?
I did.
Yes. The comments didn't print. When I printed it, the comments did not print on it.
Oh, no wonder. I, I've only looked at it in printed form. How did you get yours to print, Marie?
I just.
Mine is, mine is like Marie's. When I printed it out, it came just with the comments on the side. Yeah.
I think we, I think we lost Jeff. Jeff, are you still there?
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
Quick question for you, Jeff. On the, the draft that's posted on the town website, did you say that that's based on the town of Lyden?
Yes.
Okay, got it. All right. And then the, when it comes to the other bylaw that you're going to draft, did you say that was based on any town or no?
Well, I'm hoping to base it on work that Joel Russell has already done for you folks.
Right, okay. And then I'm hoping that, you know, I feel that really there should be two bylaws, you know, based on what I've seen so far. It just seems like it will be very confusing otherwise.
I'm thinking the same.
Is there any reason why it shouldn't be two bylaws, Jeff? Are there efficiencies by including it? I mean, you're tacking it on at the end. Can it be?
Well, Jeff, recommend it from the start.
Well, I, I, did I recommend two or did I, I think I originally recommended one.
Yeah.
And, and tacking this provision on someplace, maybe again. You know, it, it's fine that way as long as it's very clear that this is a whole new section. But it would make it probably a 16, 17, 18 page affair.
Oh, boy.
Which is a long document. Most of the NRPs are nine, 10 pages. And I see Joel's cottage era is about eight or so, eight or nine. What I was hoping to do is make them two separate bylaws. But then have it such that if any, anyone wanted to come in under the cottage era, if they qualified to come in under the cottage era and do a project on one of these estates, it would have to be, it would have their own standards that are particular to those types of developments. But it would have to come in under the broader Aegis of an NHRPZ, which is in a nutshell, going to preserve a good portion of that property.
Why would it have to come in under that? Why couldn't it be its own separate?
Did you hear that, Jeff?
I, I, I did. I'm, I'm, I'm still struggling with the most efficient way to do this because.
Well, then take your time and think it through. That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, because a lot of the process in figuring out how much land is going to be preserved, what's the best land to preserve, things like that. How the preservation gets done through what types of mechanism, monitoring, things like that, that's all going to be already contained in the NHRPZ bylaw. So I, I wouldn't want to have to restate it all in, in the cottage era. One, one thing I've been doing is, is reading through Joel's draft. And Joel had an open space bylaw in which he tries also to do cottage era. And then I read the cottage era and Joel is also trying to do the open space in both of them. So they're kind of, they're kind of jumbled up a little bit. So I, I'd kind of like to separate them out. So this is your, your natural and historic preservation bylaw. This applies to subdivisions and, and other large developments of land. Then here's your cottage era state redevelopment portion. And if you elect to do this, and here are the, here are the standards relating to these particular projects. But the project also has to fit in to the NHRPZ, which means you're going to have to preserve a lot of land. And here's how you do that.
And, and could you incorporate, in, in a separate cottage era state bylaw, could you incorporate by reference provisions of the natural resource protection bylaw? I mean, is that one way to solve the problem of duplication of length and complicating duplication?
That, that's a good idea and I'll take a look at that. So I mean, just use citations instead of. use citations instead of, yeah. Yep, that's a good idea.
Wireless caller.
Okay.
Wireless caller.
I don't know whose phone is ringing, but.
Marie, she's off, she's off the screen. Marie, are you there? You got a call.
Any other questions for Joel, for Jeff? And Jeff, do you have anything further for us before tomorrow night?
I, I do. Because I've, I've been struggling, you know, reading, reading all this cottage era stuff, and then reading all kinds of things I've seen printed in the paper and letters from people, and just trying to get a handle on, on what Stockbridge really wants out of these types of projects, how they want them to end up, what limits they don't want them to exceed. I think we could all agree that, you know, these estates are not going to preserve themselves, and that some economic boost needs to be given to them. But how much of a boost? And, and, you know, what's the, what's the scale of these projects going to be to maintain the viability of the estate? And my basic question was, on March 9th last year, Joel finished the draft of the cottage era bylaw. And before I start unwinding that and rewriting it and tweaking it, I'm, I'm just, just curious what kind of reception that got in Stockbridge, what he did.
It didn't go beyond the planning board, basically. One thing that I don't understand is, at the last meeting in March, the last hard copy meeting, I believe it was, there was an agreement at the, of the planning board to focus this strictly on historical estate type properties. So I don't know how, and I think you may get this question along the line, how this has gone from, you know, how the planning board thinking. But, you know, maybe this is a conversation of the planning board, not with Jeff. You know, how the thinking went from that agreement that we just focus on the historical estates to expanding it throughout town.
I mean, one, one key thing to keep in mind, and I know you know this, Jeff, is that there are only three cottage era estates in this town. DeSisto is the most prominent and the most recently controversial. There's Elm Court, which was going to be a hotel and is now been, who knows what's going to happen to the big old Vanderbilt estate. And then there's the Marion Fathers, the Catholic community on the top of the hill just up from downtown Stockbridge. Jeff?
Jeff, there's, that, that's true. If you count the current cottage era state 80 acre minimum size, there are dozens of cottage era, just 14 on Main Street alone, that have smaller amounts of property. And in this draft, you guys are going with 20 acres. So it's not really accurate. I don't know what the count is of cottage era with 20 acres, but it's certainly more than three.
It, that's, that's true.
One of the problems is that we haven't, you know, we need to make some decisions. And this came up with, last year with Joel as well, is that I feel that the board has not made some of the hard decisions. And, and one of those was to touch base with historic preservation about what they would consider to be historical properties at, at this point. And, you know, so we define these things. And then, yeah, yeah.
I think that there was some discussion and agreements that we didn't want to just apply it to historic properties in the conventional sense of what a historic property is going back to 100 years, that there are some interesting architectural properties potentially in Stockbridge that are much less aged than historical, but they still have features that we would like to have maintained as part of a development on the property. And the issue is, how do you create the viability for having the density and then looking at these structures and trying to make it so that it's appealing throughout the town, not just to a very selective list of parcels? And I think that was one of the things we're wrestling with.
Good point.
Jeff, you know that we do not have, Stockbridge does not have an open space committee. You're aware of that, right?
I bet so.
Yep. And we, nor do we have, you know, a forest oversight committee. So, you know, there's no land assessment has, other than, you know, what's available online using just maps and so on. There's no awareness in town of, of, or understanding of an overall land assessment plan for the town.
So you don't have an open space and rec plan from some point?
Nope.
Master plan?
A master plan dates from the 1990s.
But it was a visioning plan done in 2015, 16, I think.
Okay.
And then, and those are all posted on the town website. And then the diagnostic that Joel did is posted as well.
Yeah. I, I read his diagnostic.
Yeah. And I'm starting to hear, you know, people talking about the need for, for the master plan. I mean, that's been a, that's been a topic going on for, for many years, the need for the master plan to be updated. Some people think it should be, some people don't, you know. So it goes. So it's almost 8:30. I'm hoping that.
Yeah, you're right. You're watching your, in fact, it is 8:30. Jeff, anything else? Before tomorrow?
No, now, well, a couple things. Will there be people from the public, or this is a public workshop, I guess, right?
Yes.
Who would benefit from, I, I thought maybe I'd have the, the PowerPoint show up in case, in case anyone felt there was a need for it. I'd be able to quickly switch to it and share it.
You know, I think if we just post all the documents on the town website, like those ones that you've already sent, that clearly those could be posted, I think that will probably cover things for now. And we can also tell people that your presentation is available on, on cable, on public cable TV, online, CTSB TV has it.
Yeah, the, the last meeting where you made that presentation was recorded and is available on community television.
Okay. Yeah, I, I thought this was going to be a larger community meeting to bring more people in than.
We don't know how many members of the public are actually going to participate.
They were on last time. A lot of the public heard the first.
Yeah. And I hope, I hope there'll be a lot of people on tomorrow night, too.
But it hasn't been, I mean, it hasn't been promoted the way Randall's, you know, there's been promoting it. So I wouldn't necessarily, I'm not anticipating a big crowd, but.
We, we shall see.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have it up in case I need to go to a slide to illustrate something. But, but other than that, we can just go right through this, this draft number two here that you have now.
Okay, good. Thank you. We'll see you tomorrow afternoon.
Thanks, Jeff.
And.
See you at four.
Yeah, right. Four o'clock. Same time, same station.
Okay. And, and any suggestions that, that people have about where to go with that cottage era redevelopment? Knowing that I'm, I'm starting with Joel's, I'm starting with Joel's March 9th, 2020 version, and, you know, then so much money was, was already gone into developing that. I can't see any reason for starting from scratch. So I'm going to start adapting that. So if folks want to look that over and, and tell me what they think about it, I'd love to hear it.
Thank you, Jeff. I will do that.
Okay.
Have a chance to look at your, your draft yet, because I figured if I can be there tomorrow night, I would, I would spend some time later tonight or tomorrow morning looking at it.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff.
Do we need to call the roll on this, Jennifer, or?
Hi, Kate.
Hi.
Marie. Christine.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Wayne.
Hey.
Hi.
I heard you. Okay.
Nancy, I.
I feel it really is faster if we all just go around and say.
Thank you all.